And some other things, but we didn't seem to have a long determination on what we were going to do.
Okay.
And I do have a few things to put over with you guys, so.
Okay.
Time allows or does not allow, or more so the helpers just.
Well, we'll fit you in there at the end if nothing else.
And then, um, you guys really didn't make a formal decision on when you're going back to the ten to whatever hours. So you need maybe that for sure, or at least I did put it in the minutes.
Okay.
Um, and then I kind of wanted to know what she wanted to do about next week's meeting. Cause that would be the October eighth training day. And then the fifteenth, you guys had said something, I think that's when Alexis goes to KAC.
Yeah.
And you were going all day the first day.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to go every day.
And you guys had mentioned you would necessarily have to meet, so I guess I wanted to see what it was that you were wanting to do.
I have no objection to canceling that meeting. You see a need to. Unless something drastic came up, I don't think that it would be a problem just to.
Cancel the fifteen?
I don't, yeah, unless there's something extremely.
We meet next week if everybody's. You'll be busy all day next Monday once you're done with those.
Yeah, but I did have, um, I had asked Tammy if she could be willing to. Basically, what I want to be able to do is have the employees that are not computer illiterate come up and help them enroll in the health plan. I don't know how many or if any will take advantage of that, but I did ask Tammy if she would be willing to help and she says she would. So while I was with you, I said if you wanted to. And I still need to set up interviews. I just didn't have time to call them last week, but I didn't know, is there a day that works better for you guys? Or is your.
I would say from here on out, there's not gonna be any day that's gonna work.
Well, if you just block out the fifteenth, sixteenth and seventeenth for me. And then if it's a, if it's, if, and the afternoon is best for me, after, after two, two thirty, somewhere in there.
I'll, I'll just have to make.
Or first thing in the morning I can do too, but not in the middle of lunch.
I'll just have to, whatever will.
Well, I'll, I'll maybe see if I can't get them. Yeah, I wrote, maybe what I'll do is see if I can't get as many of them as I can on next Monday, especially because I don't have a lot on each other. Because I could.
Yeah, you don't have to be here for that and we can just go into executive session after we have an open session to do interviews if they'll come on Monday.
Be fine.
That would be great.
I'll see what I can get done.
Do you wanna, do we need a motion to cancel the fifteenth meeting or?
Yes, and then should we just go after that to change it to ten o'clock?
Do what?
Change the time. If we skip next, if, not next week, but if we skip the fifteenth, then do you wanna start back in at ten?
Uh, I don't know if we need to, but.
Be all right with me? I don't care.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't, it don't matter to me.
Okay, so what one day would that be?
Twenty second, so.
Beginning October twenty second, we'll go back to the ten to one time?
Yes. And I moved to cancel the commission meeting on October fifteenth due to the, uh, Kansas Association of Counties conference.
All set. There's no further discussion, all those papers are.
Aye. And are we still, we're gonna do eight o'clock with you on this coming Monday and then you can leave to do whatever you need to do. And if you have appointments scheduled for interviews, you'll just start them at like nine or something like that. Okay.
I forgot to bring you guys down the agenda, but I put it in your paycheck stuff if you happen to open it up. But if not, I'll give it a agenda on Monday.
We have a, um, correspondence to the Lincoln County Commission. Many thanks for mandating the recent improvements to the Westville Blacktop of East Oath Drive and North Two Ninety Road. The work crew did an excellent job of preliminarily repairing damaged areas and then performing a very thorough chip sealing overlay of the entire length. It is wise to keep this vital Lincoln County artery in good repair. With sincere gratitude, Alfred Offenberg. Does that mean next year is barned?
Sales silven, silver blacktop I think next year.
Really?
Every three years. Is that right? Didn't they do barners last year?
I thought we did silven last year.
They, now they may have done some patching and stuff. They use a patch every.
I saw, I think they went over that culvert again, that big one they put in. It looks like they did another layer to that, but I can't believe it's been three years already since the silver one.
Time flies. The older you get, the faster it's gonna get.
Gee thanks. How comforting.
I've been sitting here for sixteen years and that's pretty hard to imagine, let me tell you.
Oh, I'm all waiting on our. That's the first. Just give us two so you can kind of review. So Alexis had kind of asked me where our plans were at and, um, for health insurance. So in the far right hand column in the brown or yellow or whatever color that is, is where. Or sorry, the green column is where we are at currently, what plans everybody is taking and what that monthly cost is.
Is that the number of people, sixteen, on that?
Yes, and then, um, the potential is in yellow. And what I did is I know that we had two employees that quit that are single planned, so I went ahead and included them as a family, as like the highest potential. And I still have that county attorney position. She hasn't made a decision yet what she's doing, so I went ahead and classified her as a family, um, taking plan A. So, and I kind of put those down at the bottom. And then, um, at the very bottom I put, and I'm sorry this is kind of small, but I wanted to get it all on one page. I should have stripped this column down a little bit, but the 2019 budget is in bold, so obviously we will be under budget by fourteen thousand. That's if everybody does what they do. Now, once, uh, open enrollment is over, I can redo all of that to, to know for sure. I had the county attorney in the HR position.
But I mean, there are always times, it seems like when we are short of employees and this.
Right. No, I just did like the annual. And this, this probably isn't a true annual for this year because we've been under a little bit, but I just took what we were as of the October bill.
So the two, we went from sixty-two to sixty-four and that's because we have HR and any additional, a fair employee?
Yes.
Okay, but what you're saying is we have a few open positions under this sixty-two number?
Um, the dispatch position was on the bill and, uh, the highway department truck driver position was on this bill, so they're already calculated in here.
But we do have one open deputy, right?
No, well, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be the only one right now, correct? Okay, so that's still within range though.
I kind of take it that they're not going to.
Oh, at all? Are they, did they stop advertising?
Well, they haven't stopped advertising, but I just don't get the, yeah, the idea that that's gonna get built. I mean, I have a feeling.
Well, and even if it does, but a couple months leeway would help to make sure that that stays in, within the budget range, so that's good. That's close.
Correct, yes, pretty, pretty darn close.
Let's go ahead and take care of the minutes for.
I think, this is just minor, but it might be necessary. Under Highway Department, Dawn, if you go to the middle of that paragraph and you have, line gravel pit needs seeding and the owner has requested additional acreage that was previously cropland be seeded and then the board approved. I think maybe it should say, instead of additional acreage, it should say the owner has requested the portion that was previously cropland. Cause that kind of gives the illusion that we're seeding their cropland and it wasn't previously gravel, or it wasn't used as a gravel pit, but it was. So just a little clarification. I would just change it to the portion that was previously cropland. Excuse me. I think you need to add, under reconvene, no action taken, or did you already have that somewhere? Did I miss it?
I, I made all of them.
Maybe just under the reconvene line, we reconvene the meeting, no action, or however you usually put that in there. The nursing home portion, that's a little confusing. The top five that I listed off were actually hospital run facilities. And then the question that Mr. Finch had is, were those critical access hospitals? So that kind of wasn't related to the RFP, but maybe just, maybe just strike the top five facilities, just leave that part out. But you can leave in the, the RFP to manage the facility and then maybe strike the rest of that sentence. Cause the portion of the discussion on the top five was ones I had found listed as.
So stop it after facility.
Please, yeah, yeah. It wasn't necessarily to mail to those hospital run facilities. It was to contact them to see how they're doing that. And then his question was, are they critical access? So that was kind of the, that part of the discussion. But the RFP part is fine, yes.
I did contact a relative of mine back there near Anderson County and it's a critical access hospital, but it and the nursing home, both operated by St. Luke's.
What is St. Luke's?
St. Luke's is a nationwide hospital chain. They're a large presence in the Kansas City area, so they're like a feeder hospital, St. Luke's. And I don't know what their arrangement financially is with St. Luke's.
Yeah, okay, but it is, yeah, Anderson is critical access, at least you know that much, but thank you. Uh, that's all that I saw. I had moved to approve the minutes of September twenty fourth, two thousand eighteen as corrected.
Second.
There's no further discussion, all those papers are.
Aye.
I'll move to approve minutes of September twenty seventh.
I will second. There's no further discussion, all those papers are.
Same.
Mr. Gerstman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here because I want to express my gratitude to the commission for all the time that you've spent over the last few years trying to deal with the nursing home issues. A situation I believe has been forced upon all of you. The commission recently acted and formed a nursing home committee. Now that you've formed a committee, I believe there is an opportunity to give the committee a clear mission and the tools to carry it out. I believe a good charge would be to begin doing diligence and research all the possible options the county may be able to explore to stabilize, improve, and perhaps even expand nursing care options for our elderly population. I would like there to be an emphasis to leave no stone unturned and find every available option that may be out there. And then the committee can brief the commission on what all those options were and recommend what the committee feels is the best choice. Then the commission can act. To that end, I would like to request that you empower your nursing home committee with a budget, subject to your approval for transactions, so they can pay for research and have the counsel of an experienced independent attorney with long-term care, expertise in regulations, corporate and contractual law in this industry. The decisions this county makes over the next year may mean the difference between an opportunity for substantial, positive economic development and a sustainable healthcare future for our county. Or it could result in costly burdens we may be facing for a generation to come. Not picking the best path forward may result in the loss of nursing home care here in Lincoln County, which no one wants to see happen. I believe there's an analogy to what USD two ninety-eight was facing with some serious building infrastructure issues. Just to refresh everyone's memories, not too long ago, a representative from an outside corporation visited Lincoln, made some big proposals with big price tags to fix the school buildings. Some of these solutions also carried what seemed like very high ongoing service contract costs that would likely keep this company well paid for years to come with higher bills for the district. This first option price tag to taxpayers was gonna be as high as seven million dollars in new taxes, interest and fees over twenty years. The school board for some time didn't think there were any other options. And similarly, I believe this county has felt boxed in at times with not a lot of options for its nursing home. There are always opportunities and options if you do the research and diligence to discover, explore and evaluate what they may be. The USD two ninety-eight school board charged a committee with very specific goals. The charge was simple. Prioritize all identified needs and find a consensus solution that everyone could support from the very diverse group of individuals that were on the committee. Zoom forward to today. The USD two ninety-eight school board cut the original price tag by more than five million dollars. That's more than a seventy percent reduction and the solutions found were proven, vetted with research and independent consultation with a licensed professional. Best of all, the system selected will be serviceable by local Lincoln HVAC and other contracting firms without expensive ongoing consulting and service contracts. USD two ninety-eight did such a good job finding innovative solutions that it was able to partner with the federal government and this county and other taxing divisions to fund and execute their plans. Just as you helped the school districts here in Lincoln County, I believe there may be other taxing divisions or other entities that could help pay your support forward and help this county improve and expand its nursing care options for seniors. Forming a committee and giving them a specific mission was how USD two ninety-eight solved their challenging problems. In forming the nursing home committee, I believe you've taken the right step to expand the horizon of options that I believe are out there. From my experience working with USD two ninety-eight and being on their facility committee, I see three areas of concern with regards to your nursing home committee. Have you solicited a diverse enough group of people to be on this committee? Diversity of backgrounds and opinion is what fosters scholarly exploration and discussion. Does your committee have enough people and do the people currently on the committee have the time to do the research and exploration of every possible option that may be available to our county in its long-term care future? And most importantly, have you given the committee the budget and or tools it needs to accomplish the mission at hand? The challenge you face looking into long-term nursing care options is far more complex in state and federal law and regulations than just doing renovations for the nursing home facility. There are numerous state laws governing county established homes for the aged and county hospitals. And some of these statutes were enacted to retroactively replace and take precedence over original statutes that were here in the time that our facilities were originally established. On top of these state laws, there are thick books of regulations for both K Dads and CMS. This will complicate the nursing home committee's ability to weigh information, advice and evaluate the options that you will be able to take action on. I have two recommendations for this commission to empower its nursing home committee to deal with these complexities and challenges. My first recommendation is to allow the committee to solicit an engagement contract with a law firm that specializes in nursing homes, corporate and contractual law. My second recommendation is that your committee needs the ability to solicit and pay for research. And this can be done through county funded research grants to other highly ranked nursing home operators here in Kansas. A substantial amount of research is required if the county wants to turn these challenges and the demands that LPM Inc. has thrust, thrust upon us and turned it into an opportunity. When state and federal government agencies have a vexing problem and want it solved, they put out research grant proposals and they solicit them. We can do the same thing here in Lincoln County and put out a solicitation for research proposals. Throughout Kansas, we have dozens of nonprofit and county run facilities and long-term care units. And many are highly CMS ranked and well-run institutions. These are folks who eat, breathe and live nursing home and long-term care services, management, development and fundraising. Putting out a solicitation to these folks for their insight and especially the hard data to back up their recommendations and then scoring these applicants to decide who we will award one or more research assignments is very similar to how you found the engineering firm to help you renovate the nursing home. The L C E D F does something similar whenever they put out solicitations and applications for business improvement grants here in our county. We're just taking this to the next level. The solicitation can ask for operators who wish to author a study paper to literally solve the dilemma we are facing. And how, how and if we can intervene in our healthcare marketplace to achieve a positive outcome for everyone. The study can consider county owned and management facilities, leases, management contracts, both using county operated licenses or county owned licenses with contracted management or independent nonprofit operation. It can ask for information on county hospitals that also run long-term care units and solicit for information on expansions and developments. Along the lines of greenhouse style units or anything else we discover is doing well in other counties like ours. We can ask for information on the most important state and federal regulations and issues we want to be focusing on that match our specific situation in order for us to best navigate whatever course the study authors recommend. We can put out a request for proposals that list every possible way we hypothetically may want to proceed and see what the best operators in the state suggest along with all the pros and cons across multiple approaches. As expanding nursing home care in a successful, self-sustaining enterprise would offer this county a substantial boost in economic development and jobs, we may be very interested in nursing homes that have successfully developed expansions into related healthcare offerings. As with any solicitation, the application asks for information and credentials. And the application process provides in advance to note all of the intents that you, the commission, would be paying for if you decide to award any of these institutions a research grant. Just imagine if ten or more reputable nursing care organizations apply for the grant. Just the information and credentials and backgrounds we receive before making any award may open doors and opportunities we hadn't even thought of. If two or three study grants are awarded, we might find ourselves commissioning a study from a county run facility, a county owned facility, a county leased facility, or even a standalone nonprofit. Throughout this process, when legal and corporate law and regulation questions come up, the committee will be able to have the retained attorney I mentioned provide opinions and answer questions. This is why it would be so important to have the counsel of an attorney who specializes in this field. At this point, your committee will begin to start to make some specific recommendations and give you some real options to start considering. And you may be surprised at the options that have been discovered. After the phase one solicitation and research papers are received and evaluated, the committee and commission can immediately proceed to a phase two if a compelling option is indeed found and there's consensus support from the entire community. When the commission takes an action, a phase two award can be solicited to retain the help of one of the previous grant winners to assist the county in executing the option that you choose. The commissioners can then have the expertise from entities that have already done this when we do this ourselves. This is when the relationship that the committee and commission developed with the attorney will pay dividends because you will absolutely need an attorney to make sure contracts are done correctly and in the county's best interest going forward. And when and if the county does act to consider all the new, uh, connections and, and expertise. Basically, we're just gonna need an attorney once we start actually executing this. And it's better to develop the relationship through the exploration process, so when the real decisions have to be made, you know if you have a good attorney who's gonna, who's gonna help you do this. I can over emphasize the importance of retaining the experienced attorney. Just imagine if the county had put a license clause in the lease that gave a county a specific option or transfer of the license in the event of it or default of a non-renewal when mid-America left Lincoln or even when you renewed the lease with LPM just a year ago. It is my hope this commission will follow the success of USD two ninety-eight and mirror the process that USD two ninety-eight used to upgrade our schools. USD two ninety-eight left no stone unturned in their quest to achieve the biggest upgrades to our school infrastructure in nearly twenty years. Many of us on the facility committee believe we hit a home run for the schools, the students, the employees, the community and the taxpayers. We reduced what could have been a seven million dollar tax increase to less than two million dollars in repairs and upgrades without one penny in new tax increases and you helped achieve this. I believe a similar home run may be hit with our nursing home. I believe if you empower the committee to get independently expert legal counsel and immediately begin putting out solicitations for research grants and maybe add a few more members with, with more diverse viewpoints on the committee, a home run is attainable. To conclude, if the commission and committee follow some of my recommendations, I believe you will be in a position to be making action-based decisions from your committee in six to twelve months from today. Along my original concerns about the makeup of your commission, I recommend you do add some members to the committee. I can help the committee execute the plan I've suggested above. I believe I was very, a very productive committee member on the USD two ninety-eight facility committee and I'm ready to volunteer and help Lincoln solve its nursing home issues. Thank you.
I think David, uh, county attorney was in here the other day. She indicated that she was starting to search for an attorney.
Excellent.
Specialized in that type of stuff because she doesn't specialize in that. And she advised that we needed to hire someone. As far as expanding the committee, I'm not, I'm not saying that it shouldn't be done. I'm, I'm probably not ready to do it today. I'm probably not ready to do it today. But I think we need to get a little start to the thing before we start expanding it. So, but I appreciate your interest.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I would appreciate a copy of that. Be given to the county clerk, please. Available to the public.
Is it okay if I email this to her?
Sure. Sorry, I'm getting down there. I understood, and I don't spend much time on the internet, but there was a question as to the meeting time of the council and agent.
Yes.
They voted, I believe in June, to change their meeting time from 10 o'clock to 9 o'clock, and I know Mona was there at 9 o'clock in August. I know she didn't get there till 10 o'clock the other day, but, you know, just to clarify, you know, they voted to change their meeting times to 9 o'clock, so.
The Kansas Open Meetings Act has a provision that once a citizen puts themselves on a notify list, the organization is required to send out a notice even for regular meetings. And I do realize this was not necessarily a surprise to the board members, but the reason for the law is that when someone is trying to follow meetings, especially multiple meetings, it becomes very tedious, if not impossible, to constantly scan notices in the newspaper advertisements or look at past minutes in a meeting. So, you're referring to the post that I did. It was strictly for educational purposes because there was the confusion that happened at the LCCA is that when we mentioned to them that, you know, and I should say, we've been noticed before. They had been noticing us for all their meetings. It was that some, a member of their organization suggested that because they ran an ad in the Sentinel, that they were exempted from the requirement to notify anyone, and we wanted to make clear that whether or not a board votes to make a change or puts it in their minutes or advertises on a paper or website, it doesn't relieve them from sending out that notification to people that want to know about when those meetings take place.
I only brought that up because I want to make sure that you understood that they were meeting at 9 o'clock now.
For example, the commission, we ourselves requested notification to their board, and what we got was this piece of paper I hung over here that had every month, and it does say at the top that they're scheduled at 10:00 a.m., and we were never contacted again, which is their due diligence and their duty according to Kansas Open Meetings. So, it's just one more issue with the structure of that particular board. So, yeah, they have not noticed us either of the new time or time change, or they haven't continued to provide continual notices. They just mailed that one piece of paper back in February.
Hold on. I'm ready for you, yes.
I just wanted to talk about the bids that I did get and just our activities for the last couple of months, what we're doing right now. Flu shots, we're already deep into flu shots. We've been really busy with that, so we have, the Sylvan Clinic is set in October 11th to be in Sylvan Grove, and then the following Thursday, Lisa will be there with the normal nurse clinic, so she'll have them then. The nursing home has the paperwork. We haven't heard back from them, and we'll go there. We haven't scheduled the schools because nasal spray is back, but we don't have any yet, so we won't schedule the schools until then, so just busy the next couple of months with that. WIC is finished with the rollout, the EBT cards, everybody has those. There's no checks in Kansas anymore. I have had a couple complaints from people who don't quite understand how to use the EBT card. That's above my head, you know, it's a statewide change, and actually, it's a federal change, so they're just working with them to learn how to use an EBT card, and we just keep working on that. The aid to local grants are due. We have an entirely new system that we had to relearn that's still not all the way up from the state, so just another change as always. We do, I guess I didn't put the bids in there, did I?
No.
I thought I did. Oh, yeah, way at the bottom. We only got one bid. I don't know this person, and that was just for the concrete block part itself. I don't know if it's high or low or appropriate. I don't know. I guess, and I've got no bids on the painting, so with us going into winter, you know, putting out bids again, I just think we'll get into winter, maybe we should just table it till spring and try again.
What is this for?
Replacing the windows in the storage shed right next to the health department and painting it.
Oh, just the windows and painting?
Yes. Actually, replacing the windows with concrete block. One of the windows is broken.
Painting the outside?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how many bids you've got so far?
That's it. That's it. The 23rd was the deadline. And does the county have any requirements of people that bid on projects? Like, do they have to have their own liability insurance and all that stuff?
They have to have insurance.
Is there a list or a resolution or some guidance for me? Because I don't, I'm guessing that person probably does not have that stuff, but I don't know that.
Well, they've always required insurance.
Okay.
Is there a state statute on that that you know have done? I don't.
Well, the problem is that they don't. If something happens, technically, they're on your work.
I know. But is there some list for, like, me to go by? I don't do a lot of bids, so I don't, you know.
I don't know, as we do. I guess you can check with them. I don't know, so.
So, are you okay if I just table it till spring?
Is that, is that building heated and cooled?
No.
It just, you just have documents in there?
There are all kinds of stuff.
Yes, and David, all of David's stories in there also of his emergency preparedness stuff is in there.
You should know.
There's electricity. I will, I will. There's electricity, and we did have, there's a window air that needs to come out. It doesn't work, so that's part of, that's part of the meeting. But no, it is not heated and cooled. Where was it? Oh, we applied to the trauma council for a safety grant to do some training on texting and driving with our adolescent population when they get their immunizations. Specifically, there's, we did get the grant. We're looking at purchasing these. When you put your cell phone in this pocket, it does not ring, it does not ding, it does not, it doesn't do anything. It blocks all incoming. When you take it out of there, then all your messages come through, but, and we're going to have paw prints print some, stay alive, don't text and drive, those kind of things. And the kids will get these if they come in for the immunizations and do the little training that we have for them, so. Right now, we're just waiting for paw prints to have time, and the funds, we still haven't got them yet, although we've been notified we've been awarded, so. And we do use paw prints and the Sylvan Grove cleaning shop kind of back and forth, and pick favorites and just take turns, so try to give both of the kids some work. We are at the end of the 1422 grant cycle, which was a lot of planning money. We did get a card from the North Central Kansas Health Collaborative, which was set up with part of the 1422 funds. Stephanie Simmons, who is the, over the Mitchell County Hospital Foundation, chairs that group, and all the grant funds come from that office. So, that grant is over, so Gaylene is specifically just on our tobacco grant, which is about six hours a week at most. She's contracted to do that with the schools. Basically, it's working with the schools in tobacco education, so. The Health Equity Grant, you'll be seeing more on that. We're focused on poverty and health in the city of Beverly, and we're working, I'm working with the city council on several things, but you may have sent some bills. We're sending two people to leadership in Lincoln County. The Health Equity Grant has a lot to do with teaching their community to have some leadership skills to help benefit the community and the health of the community in the long run, so that's why we are, and then they will do a project for the city of Beverly. They'll work on one. And also Jennifer is their city attorney, and she's working on some code enforcement and getting a code officer hired. Kelly had some extra healthy homes and hands money that each city got, and that's what Beverly is going to use their money on, is maybe to get some ordinances enforced, so we're working on that. And then just the calendar, Stop the Bleed at the County Training Day. We've done Stop the Bleed at the Lincoln Schools. Fifty-five people were trained. We're going to Sylvan Grove Schools November, it's a Friday in November, and then with the County Training Day. And it's basically, it's the old army technique, you know, use a tourniquet and pack the wound as much as you can, but with the recent school shootings and the shooting in Las Vegas, they've turned that, if they had had training, people, laypeople had training on that, a lot of more people would have lived because they died unweeding to death, so. Easily, a county highway guy when they're trimming trees could get hurt, or somebody could come up here and do something, so I think it's a good training to have. And then David got some money to purchase some Stop the Bleed kits for everyone, so I think it'll be a good training, and just to have those kits out with the county employees would be a good thing to have. That's all I got today. And reminding Terry, LIPC is October 29th.
I've been going to stop down and visit with you. Do you have any available office space at all down there?
Could use one more office actually for WIC. We do have that meeting room, we know, but we use that a lot, so could be made into offices, but.
I don't know if you'd ever want.
I wouldn't want to give up this space.
I guess you can. I'll get one.
Yeah, I will. I will. And then maybe I can work with Dawn on some kind of a guideline for me to give to them when people ask to bid. I did have somebody come in and asked her about the painting, but I know it was somebody that probably didn't have their own. I never think that, so I just.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will have flu shots on Training Day too. That's all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So is Hagerston. He's here.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
On behalf of the members of the Sylvan Senior Center here today, we would like to update you on our budget, on our situation of trying to claim the $4,000 owed us from the 2017 mil levy budget. When we came to request the money, we were told that we needed to address the LCCA on the issue. Commissioner Wallace said the 2017 budget money has already been appropriated and is sitting in the LCC bank account. You said that the Sylvan Senior Center should request it from the LCCA, and they should pay it out to us. So, we wrote a letter to the LCCA politely requesting our money. We were told by the members of the LCCA that they received the letter, agreed with their stance, and were ready to vote to give us the money owed us. However, Commissioner Finch spoke up in the meeting and advised the LCCA not to give it to us, so they did not. Now we are confused, and so is the LCCA. Why do the commissioners instruct us in this setting to approach the LCCA for our mil levy money, and then at the same time send representative to the LCCA to deny us the money? We are still owed $4,000 from the 2017 budget. How do you propose, as a united body, that we go about procuring it?
I did not tell them not to pay you. I said they needed to do an accounting to see how much had been paid and had not been paid. That is where I told them. I did not tell them not to pay you.
Okay, then interpretation by them was probably so, because I have talked to Nancy Nitsch since then, and we complied with the audit. Nancy Nitsch and Judy Elbers will come. They're reviewing the information on what we received and our utilities and everything. And then they're having a special meeting on the 16th of October, I understand, and so we would hope to see that our funds are dispersed at that time.
I did not tell them not to pay you. I told them to do an accounting because we had been hearing this forever, that you never got any money, and I finally produced the checks that you did. I don't remember how much of that was special stuff and how much of it was budget stuff.
We were given that, though. We already got that. The commission got that.
I gave you the three years of financial reports from there.
Yeah. So, we've already seen that.
But you also said you didn't get any money, and you did.
No.
Well, I didn't say we did.
All I said was that they needed to go into their books and see how much they had paid you and how much they hadn't paid you. I'm not going to take somebody's word for anything.
We've already been given those documents, though, Terry, and we've already discussed it at length.
Months ago.
Well, what does that matter? That means we've had the knowledge for a long time.
Could I request a recommendation from the LCCA in writing, or excuse me, from the commission in writing to the LCCA to disperse some money?
I don't know what that number is, so I'm not going to do no.
Well, unless.
I think, I think when they look and they see how much they've given you and how much they still owe you, they're going to write you a check. I don't think, there's no doubt in my mind.
Why didn't they do it before, then?
Just to take, just to take a piece of paper that says you owe us this amount of money without going back and checking.
Well, that's from the budget, so they have the budget from previous year.
But Terry, my question is, why didn't they disperse the entire budget in the first place? That's, that's why we're dealing with this a year and a half later.
I'll tell you, there are multiple reasons. Number one, they refused to turn in any paperwork for a long period of time. Then they stated they didn't accept any money from you. You know, you guys are your own worst enemy part of the time.
As far, as far as prior to my time, there was maybe one individual several years back who said they wouldn't accept money from the LCCA, but not in the current status.
That was in 2010, I believe, if I'm, if my memory serves.
There was a letter. We got a copy of it. That you didn't recognize them, and you wouldn't accept money from them.
No, never said anything, we wouldn't accept money. We didn't recognize them as the governing body over us, because 501(c)(3) is independent.
Right.
We're a 501(c)(3).
And it was mandating that you had certain things in your bylaws and that you did certain things and gave up certain records, which is not legal. It wasn't a legal request by the LCCA of the senior centers.
It doesn't have to be a legal request.
What I'm saying is, it was illegal.
They make the rules.
No.
Yeah.
No, they cannot, one, one independent 501(c)(3) cannot tell another independent 501(c)(3) how to administrate their dealings.
The one 501(c)(3) does not have to hand money to another 501(c)(3) if they don't comply with, with the criteria to get that money.
The criteria that they set forth was illegal. You cannot ask them to produce.
They can have their own criteria. It doesn't affect their criteria whatsoever.
We complied with the audit as requested, and we felt we met our requirements.
And like I said, I think when they go through and they see exactly how much they owe you, they'll write you a check for it.
Why wouldn't they know that already? If they're doing their own accounting, why wouldn't they already know that?
Well, for one thing, the treasurer wasn't at the meeting. The director wasn't at the meeting. So, who there had those records?
And they may not come again. Who knows?
Possibly. But my understanding was that they were going to delay it, they were going to go back and look through, and they were going to come up with the exact amount, and then they're going to pay you.
Regardless, I guess.
But to come in here and say that I said not to pay you is not correct.
All that was told.
That is not correct.
My question.
I don't care what you were told. You come in here and you make an accusation like that against me that is not true.
My question, Terry, is, as the board, we did sit here and Al Joe's the one that said it and neither you or I objected. He said, "We weren't going to disperse 2017 money to the senior centers" because we had already approved that money back in 2017.
And when they determine exactly what that number really is, they will.
Let's be careful what I said. When they said they wanted 2017 money, I stated that the 2017 money had already been paid to the Lincoln County Council on Aging.
That's exactly what I just said.
And that is where the money is. Now, I didn't say they should pay it, I just said, "That's where the money is. If you want 2017 money, it's in the Council on Aging." I don't have it. I can't pay it.
And we did the request.
Okay, that's, that's as much as I said.
If you think it's unreasonable for them to look into their books and see what the exact amount is, I don't.
I don't think it's unreasonable for them to look into their books.
Well, then what are you, what are you complaining about?
We just haven't received the money.
Well, you're not going to until they look through there and get the exact amount.
But this is almost a year and a half later.
No, it's, it's four or five days.
No, they've, they've been requesting. No, they've been requesting this money since, since we've heard from them at the beginning of this year.
And they refuse to comply with any of the criteria to get it.
I just told you that the criteria that was set forth by the LCCA, the demands set upon the Sylvan Senior, you can't illegally demand that another group do something for you that's, they don't have to.
Are you telling me that the Dane Hansen Foundation has to follow everyone else's criteria that they give money to? No, they have their own criteria.
No, I'm saying if the Dane Hansen Foundation was requesting documentation that they're not legally allowed to request.
Then they don't have to disperse the money. If the, if the entity does not want to get it, they don't have any reason to have to give them that money. There is no law that says that they have to give them that money if they don't follow the criteria of that organization.
We, as a commission, set the new criteria, which was have an audit. That's exactly, and actually, that's what you said. I didn't even say that, you said it. You said, "After you see the audit, that you'd have no problem dispersing money." That, and if you want to find the video, we can.
We dispersed the 2018 money.
And what he's saying is, they still have not received their 2017 money. We, as a commission, relinquished the 2017 taxes after the budgets were brought to the table and we knew that the LCCA was planning on dispersing that money. So what we're being told now is that we gave money to an organization that did not disperse it over a year ago.
Because that entity didn't follow their criteria to get the money. I sit through those meetings, I listen to your stuff every month when you were on there. You chose to get off of there. Now you have Bob Lovis carrying your water.
There's several more than that.
What water exactly are you referring to?
It's a term.
We hope on the October 16th meeting that the board does disperse.
I'm sure they will.
I hope so.
They're going to go through there and whatever money you still have coming, you're going to get.
Any comments from any of the members? That's all I have, I guess, at this time, then.
I can only say one thing that I'm encouraged in this, is that there is at least some communication. Now, whether it's very civil or not, I don't know. But at least you are communicating with the Council on Aging and it's, that's the only way things are going to work out if you people continue to communicate.
And Commissioner Wallace, yes, we are. And Bob Lovis comes to see us at Sylvan Senior Center.
And that is encouraging.
And Nancy Nitsch does, and so we do have communication with some of those on the board. Any other questions for me?
Nope.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Bob. Michael.
Good morning. Tanner did some checking for us on the Highland Lake Dam. Sent in to see what it's going to take to do a permit to do the repairs that was indicated in the dam inspection. And the reply we got from Ambrose Ketter at the Kings Department of Ag, which oversees this, basically said that they cannot permit it because it is an existing illegal dam. And they cannot issue a permit even for a somewhat minor modification as this without plans to upgrade the dam to current standards. This would not only involve plan specs and a design report, but as per the above regulation, possibly a survey and geologic investigation. So with that being said, I'm going to have Tanner check in to see exactly what that would actually cost.
May I see that?
And I don't know what current specs would be. I'm sure it would be basically the standards of what a brand-new watershed would be. And I assume it would have to be cleaned out. Cleaned out, dam elevated and everything.
So cleaned out, is that what that means?
I'm sure. A riser would probably have to be installed, because I don't think there's one there, is there?
There is a, there is a drawdown.
But it's not approached, it's not anywhere near the day standard.
What's a freeboard?
Freeboard's the amount of water it holds, available space.
So that's what they're saying. They're saying it's out of compliance, so now it's illegal because it won't hold enough.
It doesn't hold what it was designed to anyways.
Problems going on before I got here.
Okay, so.
So it's been going on for twenty-some years, that the state has been coming in saying this and saying that.
Right, but this other, maybe you read this to us before, but this says clear back in March, it was sent to Tanner, that it says, "Closing the road will not allow the county to transfer ownership of the dam to another party." "Do do so," I think he means "to do so." "We would need documentation to show that both the county and the new owner agree in the change of ownership." Did we discuss that? I don't remember discussing that.
You could discuss the ownership of the dam and there's some.
No, we just had a comment.
There is some, what should I say, conflicts on really who owns the dam, because it appears that what the county right away is in the middle of the pond and the road is on private property.
But what he's saying is.
And it was never transferred.
Or she, excuse me, this is from a woman. What she's saying is, "Closing the road will not allow the county to transfer ownership of the dam." "You would need documentation to show that both the county and the new owner, which whoever's taking responsibility for the dam, agree in writing."
And that's why we did the O and E report.
Well, the last time we had a discussion, we were still saying, "Well, if we just close the road, then it's not our problem." That was, what, two weeks ago or three weeks ago when I brought that up? I never read this. I don't think we're going to get a party, one individual, to take on the responsibility of that.
Have we been in communication with Monty Brennman on this lately?
I have not been dealing with him.
You know, he is, he's moved up in the state, part of that. The other thing that, as I remember when this was brought up several years ago, is that the permits that were required for that dam were never secured correctly. And that has to go back to Soil Conservation or the NCR past the federal government, whatever those people were that were doing that, that they never did follow through completely with what was supposed to be permitted. So therefore I, this is a really tangled mess. County was never, never transferred any property or any easements. So our easements appears on record in the middle of the pool. Nobody seems to own the dam. They think the county does, but really, I'm not sure that that can be verified. I guess I would contact Monty and see if he knows who to contact. This may have to refer to the Attorney General eventually to sort this legal quid pro quo out. But there's, there's some real problems legally when that was built. That was not right from what the papers indicated several years ago, so.
I don't know somehow.
There is no way that we can bring that up to specs. We're talking probably well over a million dollars. Maybe more. I mean, we renovated one in Salt Creek Township, had to redo a riser or a drawdown and it was not quite a half a million dollars. By the time we dug through the dam and put it back, these are astronomical costs anymore to do that kind of stuff.
Do you do this back or do you?
Yeah, I would.
I didn't make a copy of it.
But I would contact Monty and see, since he, he might know where we can go to get some help. We've used a guy in, in the State Department down there with Salt Creek Watershed. Akeem, but I can't think what his rest of his name is, was very helpful and got us some money to do the project in Salt Creek, because we couldn't have done it without raising taxes considerably for the watershed.
Understood.
Akeem Asadia, I believe is his name. And I assume he's still there, that was a couple of years ago.
Was he missing the NRS, NRCSI?
That is in, that's in Kansas, I think that, well.
DWR.
I don't know.
Okay.
But Monty would know, Monty would be able to orient. I can't think what the guy's name is down there now, he knows him too well.
The tank car project up on X-Ray Drive, they should have it completed this week as long as the weather cooperates. They're traveling over it now, we just got to finish one wing wall and removal of the shoe floors. Friday, I had the pre-construction conference with K-Doc and the contractor on Bridge OS 87. While there, I did visit with Kurt Mahler with L and M concerning driving pile at OS 105. And he had it on his list to visit with me about also. So he's going to go look at the site and come up with determination and give us a new price on that. But he is all for it. He said he's been doing a lot of, a lot of county bridges around the state.
Does he believe he can beat his bid, since he was already going to be in the area?
He didn't comment on that. But I don't know why he couldn't.
Did I have to start big?
He's still trying to say October 15th. There's a little bit of optimism within K-Doc and the engineers, whether or not that will happen that quickly. Has another project in the state, he's going to start on the same day, so.
What do they do with that iron, the bridge is out of ours, or?
They will salvage.
They will salvage with the ice. They, they get it.
New blades are supposed to be delivered today. We'll see with the weather conditions if they're allowed to travel. They had a call to say they wouldn't, but they might be held up a little bit today. And then we're going to revisit again today on John Wolding with the Working Foreman. If that's something we're going to look into do, potentially adding a position there to help us along with getting some jobs completed and some training or.
Do you have any projects that you can work on right now?
There's always projects. I know he is going to be busy for several more weeks trying to get caught up blading and mowing before the snow flies. But, you know, I think a lot of it's going to play in what kind of winter we have and if we're going to be able to elevate some roads, clip some shoulder edges and stuff like that.
If you can utilize your honor, I have a problem with you there myself.
What, what are we going to do about that blade position if he does that?
We'd have to advertise. And if you guys were willing to add a position within the Highway Department.
So, so basically, we're coming down to adding a position, right?
What did you budget for?
I don't believe I had anything in the budget for an added position at the time.
We also don't have it in the budget for an insurance plan. So that's going to pose a problem. And I would say that if we are creating a new position, we need to advertise for the new position, not just hand-slide someone into it and then advertise to fill that person's position. If this person who currently holds the position wants to apply and that's who's selected for the job, so be it. I, you know, I would be against just manipulating the situation where we should slide some people around and then try to fill in, you know, that hole. That seems to be a trend that doesn't fare well.
I don't know. Without the insurance plan and a plan and a budget to create another position, I don't know if that's. You know, if we can continue on a little while here, putting on some special projects if Roy still hasn't bladed it, I guess that would be one thing, but. I don't know if the timing as far as creating a position is. I left up projections this morning on health insurance and could we fit one in? Probably could, because we'll never go all the whole year being fully staffed, but. Or the chances of that are pretty slim. I don't think it's ever happened before. But you're talking about basically $50,000 a year by the time you do the health insurance and the benefits and the wages and. So I guess my, my feeling on it would be, you know, if we can continue on as we are and just use them on some special projects, but I'm not convinced right at the moment that we can have a position.
I would, I would not. I don't, I don't think we can take, add another position. I don't think we have the budget to do it next year, myself. I think we're going to be running pretty close the way it is, probably too close.
What are your options for splitting up his route?
Until it snows or something like muddy, it would work. But if it snows or is muddy, it won't work.
Pretty hard to do, depending on weather. Dry, no snow and everything, you can make it work, but. Get some snows, you can't cover your outs, you know.
We kind of looked at that here a few years ago, cutting down to eight instead of ten. A lot of times it would work, but. Really need the blade out there in the snowstorm and stuff like that, they can't cover enough ground, but. and stuff like that, they can't cover enough ground to try to absorb it.
In dry weather, you can get away with it.
The winters we've had, the last two or three winters, a couple, three inches of snow, yeah, we can't get blizzards like we've seen in the past that fight all day to get...
Well, I would assume in dire weather like that, you wouldn't really be hauling or trucking anything. So what do the truck drivers do in that situation?
Some of them are on the plow.
Yeah, I'm the plow trucks.
Might be on a loader or pushing snow or the spare blade or...
Well, that sounds like a solution to that issue.
Yeah, it's usually always something like say a loader. You got lots of snow, clean it out, dress it, haul it on snow around. Lots of stuff here in town, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, we haven't had snow for a few years.
We're going to get caught one of these years.
I guess the only solution is if we have special projects come up, we use them. And if we don't, we would revert it back to his blade route. We were fortunate, we got along pretty good this time. But if it had been raining and bad, we would have been in trouble because you just can't cover that many miles that we have, so...
Was he overseeing this chip sealing project?
From time to time, yes, he assisted in that case.
We got a thank you note here. I don't know if you got one too, but we'll just pass that along. We already read it under correspondence.
Yeah, I got it.
Got a copy?
I had a couple of thank yous from the guys that never got a note or anything. Working on the road here, requested to see if we'd get bladed. He was hauling a bunch of hay out. So I got a guy over there who was spot having close and taking care of it. He called me earlier that day and thanked us for getting right on that. Sure appreciated it, so... We do get a few thank yous once in a while.
When you finished putting gravel down here in the southeast corner, I think you were probably finishing up Elk, I'm assuming. Where did that come from? What pit was that hauled from?
Started on Elk.
Elk was red rock.
About three miles was red rock from Whiter's.
On the Vesper Road?
Yeah, from the Vesper Road.
So what was being hauled from west to east on 18 and then down past Beverly?
We have Beverly, we haul some quartzite, red rock and covering up some bad places.
From quartzite or from our field? What do we have left of that from last year's purchase?
Not very much.
Did we buy again this year? I can't remember. I think we did once early in this year.
If it was, it was real early in the year.
Yeah.
I think so. I think we hauled a little bit before the price increase hit.
Bob, I had talked to you about, you said they were hauling up there. I don't know which pit it was coming from, but they were up in the northwest corner. Did they get some on Vine?
Yeah, like I told you, we're working over there and we're working across.
They're just not there yet? They're west of that?
Yeah, we're west of the highway up there, yeah.
So who's overseeing that? Is that Johnny Wolding?
No. I tell them and the blade men, they know where some of their spots are. So I kind of tell them to pick out the spots that they need to load or two on or get it covered up before winter hits here. Staff, it's telling kids those, I pretty much know where all the spots are. Besides what I have, less than down for them. Most of mine are long stretches of grain or whatever.
That all you guys got?
That's all I have. Thank you guys. Thank you.
So can I interrupt just a minute? What was the actual decision on Johnny Wolding? And are we continuing the dollar per hour price?
I think we take it back. Personally, I think we take it back. I think that he needs to, while he's working on his route, I don't know that we need to be doing that. If there's a special project come up, I would assume you would come in and ask us and we would evaluate it at that time. Do you need a motion, Don?
Probably since it was a motion.
I would move to move John Wolding back. I don't know how you want to say it, Don.
Back to the original position.
As of October 1st.
How was that?
My question is, when Bob was gone, what was he doing in his place?
He assisted with the chip seal and the blade routes and stuff that were still doing their blading and stuff. He assisted in getting them pointed in the right direction and all that.
I know, I saw him out marking where the patching needed to be done.
For the chip seal?
I thought Bob would normally be the one out doing it, Johnny was out doing it. I saw him a couple of different locations.
So he headed up the chip seal project is basically what transpired. Was he facilitating any logistics for... Was he helping to direct any gravel trucking? Was he... I mean, the chip seal project, I know that was ongoing, but was he doing anything else as far as record keeping or going and looking at determining where things needed to be done? I mean, you said he was helping on the routes, helping do like physically or just telling them where he thought things needed to be fixed?
Some of that. And then he would look at some concerns if there's something called in and he'd go look at that and direct the guys on what they might need to do to fix it and stuff like that.
So what was the feedback from the other employees on him giving them some guidance?
I believe it was all positive. I didn't hear anything negative from it.
So do you think there's been some re-evaluation or reassessment? I mean, you said many times that they've been adverse to training. Do you think there was some positive receipt of his constructive criticism or re-evaluation of their issues there?
For the amount of time you had to work with him, I think so. You know, it takes more than just a couple of hours to be able to help some of the people do some of the stuff.
Issues straighten out, right.
Yes.
So then maybe we need to continue that during this weather before it does get bad. Maybe he can do a little more help.
Like I said, he's got several weeks of work to get his route caught up yet. He's got blading and mowing and...
Yeah, there is no objection to revisiting this at another time.
I call for those.
I was in favor, say aye. Y'all have a great one.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quote from KCOM to update our Z-tron console. We spoke with them last Tuesday. They're in the office. This would come out of the 911 fund, which we have over 150,000 in there right now. Have to look at our equipment. There's a few costs that you could take out of there using our existing power supply. That's a $3,000 expense on there. Using a semi, an updated quote, I have not received it yet. So it may be less than the 86,000 that it shows. That is our paging console, it's our main radio for dispatch to page out fire EMS, rescue, tornado sirens.
When's the last time this was done?
2000, end of 2005, beginning of 2006. So it's been 12, 13 years.
Is that about a normal timeframe?
It's, yeah, it's computer system. We've upgraded the computer. They recommend it every three years and I would have to go back and see when the last time that was. But it's only been once since I've been here.
I know we've done it, I think once, since I've been here.
What's that? Yeah, once.
So I guess I'm just asking, is that for $86,544, give or take? Is that going to last a decade is kind of where I'm going with that.
The machine itself should, the computers will be updated every three years. That's our unit. But as far as that, it's a little different console than what we have now. It's a computer-based one we have now is a full-size counter.
This is what this workstation, Ben Dole thing called?
They offered a secondary unit, but I don't think we need that. It's either have a full another station or a laptop. But the full station is under $24,000, laptop was $19,000. I don't foresee us needing that.
Technology changes and I have to keep up with it, I guess.
And I know David Doe with the repeater board is looking at adding a tornado siren in Vesper. And we'd be able to add that to our, to the Z-tron, no problem. This would just be adding the tone box and downloading the software.
Is there like a monthly maintenance fee or something? Is this who we bought from last time?
Yeah.
Are there any other companies that do that?
I talked to a salesman from Motorola last year and he was quoting us $120,000. KCOM's always been good to us with our consoles. Anytime we have any troubles, they're there within an hour or two.
In Solana, they're... At all, one time they could monitor things in Solana and they changed us to the repeater and stuff from Solana.
With the 911 fund, we can use it for equipment for 911, training for dispatchers, reoccurring phone charges, GIS maintenance.
Is that what's collected on the phone bills?
Yeah. And then road signs, county road signs. Those are the four things you can use the funds for.
Having a big road signs wasn't included?
Still is.
So this is going to, you're going to get an updated cost?
Yes. It should be cheaper than that one, so... Any questions?
Can you bring us back?
I can bring it back in.
Long overdue, probably.
That's important.
It's probably we have problems with it before.
What happens to the old equipment?
That's a good question. I don't know if it's ours to destroy or KCOM takes it too. A lot of like the radios, it connects to the radios, the base tower in our basement. So those would all be the same. It'd just be the hardware.
It's like we have $140,000. Better than $140,000.
Do we need a motion to approve an expense or how does, do you want to wait until the new bid?
We want to wait until the bid comes in and we'll do, give the bid, we'll approve it.
I guess the consensus would be to...
Ah, you need to move forward. I don't think there's any doubt about it, it's that old. And we have the money.
And that's, Monty set aside for that from the tax and stuff.
What's the computer update cost? If you said that hasn't been done to you, do you know, have any idea?
It would be done with this, with this...
It'll be included in this.
But then every three years, he said they would just buy a tower from Dell that meets the specifications.
Oh, the computer was in this? I didn't see it.
Yeah, that's included with that.
Or is that part of what this workstation?
It's part of that first workstation.
Oh, okay. I see.
The restroom's cables.
I see, yeah.
Foot switches are going to go wireless so they can answer the phone, talk on the radio, answer 911, just with a wireless headset. So that'll be... They don't have, they're in the restroom. They don't have to raise that.
What is an annual income from the 911?
$50,000.
50? Well, that covers it pretty well because that's, you'd have to budget about $10,000 a year just to cover this every decade.
That's why they have that because none of the counties could ever afford that.
To keep up with the expense of changing over the technology.
It's based on size.
How does that come in? Does that...
It comes from the state because we're under a certain population. Like we would not generate that many, that much money in user fees. And so a couple of years ago, they consolidated. And so the state collects it and then they disperse it each, well, each month, I think. They send us 911 funds, but we're guaranteed a minimum of $50,000, which is probably about $15,000 more than what we would have received.
A little sharing from Johnson County.
Yeah, really.
Cedric County's around $350 a year and vice versa, so...
Okay, thank you.
But it's thoughtful. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Jamie, here to see us?
I guess so.
When the audit report preliminary came to us, we noticed that you had a checking account. I had forgotten you had.
The registrar of deeds has had one for 50-plus years.
And he recommended we do away with it. And I probably think that's a good idea just from bookkeeping. And I think Don visited with you and you had no problem. You know, the policy has been or understood policy, I guess, for several years is that we want all money turned into the treasurer's office at least at the end of the week so we don't have a lot of money laying in drawers or anywhere else. And I'm sure you, it's no problem. I'm sure you're very good responsible.
Well, Leanne and I have discussed and she wants me to continue like I do to the bank, so...
Okay, okay.
Mid-month and the end of month.
So you'll make the deposits, it's just going to go into her?
No, I'll make the deposit to her the middle of the month, end of the month instead of going to the bank.
Yeah.
And you keep what cash is there under what, if somebody gives you a check, you keep it in your drawer, you keep it in the safe?
It's kept in the vault.
It's kept in the vault. We've had problems in the past and I just want to make sure that the money is secure.
It is secure.
At night.
Yep, very much so. All the time.
That's why we really wanted to make sure that you were on the same page with us with the audit. As I said, I think it's probably a good bookkeeping practice that we do that.
Yep, I don't have a problem with it. I knew it was coming, just a matter of when.
Any other problems, any needs?
No.
Good.
Free status quo, just whenever something comes in.
And receipts are...
Money is down.
Money is down.
Money is down.
Continuing to go down.
Yeah, we're not going to make up without having the mortgage registration. There's just no way. So revenue is dropping.
And is that true in all counties that you visited with?
Yes, very true in all counties, even the larger counties.
Who's handling that now?
There is no, after this year, there is no mortgage registration.
Okay, they're just not having a fee?
No, that's the state of Kansas.
They just eliminated the fee?
True.
So you're not, it's not going to be, it's not even going to be kept on the books?
No.
I didn't realize that.
No, it's going away.
So now it's no longer public record if you have a mortgage is basically what?
That I cannot answer. That's going to be up to the title companies and the lenders. I don't know.
What do you mean, no?
We can't, unless they give it to us, we won't have it.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, if she has it, her office is public record. So that's been all these years and that's why you collect the fee and you keep the public record. But you're saying now that they did away with the requirement that someone come here and register it, now there's no record from now on?
No, that's not what I said. They're doing away with the mortgage registration tax, which is a fee based on the indebtedness of the mortgage. So if you had a $260,000 mortgage... So if you had a 26, $260,000 mortgage, five years ago, it would've been $260 in mortgage registration tax that the county got to keep.
When it, when it transpired?
When they recorded the mortgage.
When they recorded the mortgage.
Now, on that mortgage, I would get 26 cents.
So it's not done away with?
After this year, it is gone.
So you don't have to keep the record anymore? That's what I asked, and you said no.
That, no, that, I, no, no, no.
This is money we're talking about.
This is money, this, the mortgage, if the bank and the title companies require it to be recorded, which I'm sure they will, then we will continue to get the recording fees, but there will be no mortgage registration. And mortgage fees is based on the number of pages.
So you do still have to keep the record? Okay.
We just don't collect... We just don't collect the extra fees?
You're not collecting money there, it's...
Okay, well, that's what I'm... The question I asked was, do you still have, right, and you said no, but that's okay, I understand now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for you, Tammy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Don, do you have some more stuff?
Yes, I do. And once she issues an official opinion, then when we make a decision... I'm not sure why she sent this to, to me, 'cause normally she sends it to you guys, but, um, the Cloud County clerk, she has a child that has Down Syndrome, so she's really active in the state. And I think last year you guys did this, but she's asking that each county proclaim the month of October as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. So it's kinda true to her heart.
I move we declare October Down Syndrome Month.
I'll have a second. There are no further discussion, all those investigators, aye.
Aye.
Okay. And that's the one we signed?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, back to the health insurance. Is, uh, rate for the employee that I have identified, is the 10% still sufficient, or are you wanting to do something different? Last year's motion was that the employees would pay 10%.
Yeah. I have no, I have no problem with that. I think, I think if we're going to change that, we needed to be talking to the employees earlier, before enrollment.
Well, enrollment is happening.
Yeah.
So Monday is the talk, so...
Yeah, that's what I said.
The cost you did was our average monthly cost, which we're gonna pay out, which covers the 10% for both halves of the year.
Yes. Is that okay? And do you want to do the six cents?
I prefer that, no.
Okay. Okay.
You guys will be looking at some changes in the healthcare plan, probably, and something needs to be addressed at that time, I think that's time to address it.
And I think it is important for me to notate, there are five people that are not taking the plan currently, that could always, or if those positions re...
But there are, there's an allowance on here for them?
No, this does not include that. So, just so you are aware of that, I don't foresee any changes, but, okay. And then, last thing that I wanted to kinda discuss, was going to do this Thursday, but since everybody was present, a lot of times you guys don't, you see the broken-out variances of people's wages, you know, all of the different categories, and it doesn't really necessarily show you a number. So everything highlighted is, and I just wanna point out, our sheriff and our undersheriff are probably a little bit not right in pay cycle. Everybody that is highlighted made more than, than the undersheriff. And I included his department, and then I also included the ambulance department, partly because, um, I just think that you guys need to know that the ambulance attendants are making more than your undersheriff is, and in some cases, more than your sheriff is. And I, I don't know, I, I feel like their jobs are important, I feel like when they have to strap on a gun and wear a bulletproof vest every day, that maybe they need a little bit more money than their employees. But I understand they have different responsibilities, but I also know that they go out there. So I just, this has been kinda commented on several months in our office throughout the years, and I guess I didn't really realize it till I was doing the payroll myself, and I just wanna point it out, so to you guys to do what you want to with it, but...
Most of this appears because of overtime, doesn't it?
Yes.
All of it occurs.
Um, yes, all of it is because of overtime. But I will tell you, if you think your department heads are working overtime...
Yeah, they are.
They are. I don't know directly the situation in the sheriff's office, um, but I do know that they take every other weekend, the sheriff takes one, and the undersheriff, and then I know, for example, that Dustin takes some of the call, or some of the time out when people are on vacation, he's filling those positions. I just don't know to the extent of how much, I've never asked him, and I don't know if it's really my place, or if it's your guys' place, but, um...
Well, they've been unable to fill a lot of their deputy positions, so that's part of the reason for the overtime, but there's always gonna be overtime, 'cause things happen before they get right, before they're going off shift, and...
There it is. And I, I don't know if the answer is maybe to make the undersheriff, we choose to, to make the undersheriff position not exempt, or we choose to make it exempt from overtime, I, I don't know. You were allowed to do that because he, it serves at the sole whim of the sheriff, it is their official appointee, but so does about every other employee under them, serves at the sole whim, so maybe the solution is to have the undersheriff position be, um, subject to overtime, or they're allowed to, to submit, um...
Well, I think the overtime issue with the deputies is because we have an open position, right?
Partially, but they do have things happen, they get called out.
At the end of the shift or something.
But the overtime that the EMS department is collecting on is because we have a 24-hour shift.
Yes, they serve a 24-hour shift.
That, and occasionally, they'll have to cover the shift for someone. It's not scheduled, somebody is ill or something like that.
Well, I have no problem paying out overtime, except the fact that we are guaranteeing every employee eight hours of overtime every week with this shift situation.
The other, the other difference with law enforcement is there is a federal law that says that communities do not have to pay overtime above 43, or they do not have to pay overtime under 43 hours. So our law enforcement officers right now only earn overtime when they're on 43 hours, compared to every other employee that works 40. And I don't know if that's really even fair either. It used to be okay when they were on salary, but when we moved them to an hourly wage, I guess I just don't understand why it's, it's fair for one department to be on 43 hours and another department to be on 40 hours, and...
I don't know why that rule, that law exists. Apparently there was a reason for it sometime, I don't know what it is.
I think a lot of times it was because they were on, on a salary, and so it was easy, easier to stomach, but I, I just don't think that our officers are so grossly overpaid that we couldn't pay them based upon a 40 hour. And I had not talked to Mike and Dustin about this, I, I would, um, I know that they, they get a little, they just, they don't wanna complain. And, and I'm not really complaining, I'm just kinda pointing out to you guys...
Yeah, bringing it to our attention, and I think we should address it.
The things that are maybe not necessarily fair all the time.
Well, and what are the options to do salary instead of hourly for the 24-hour shifts? Because that would put a cap on some of that expense for that budget.
I still, we would still have to pay them overtime, 'cause they're not classified as an exempt position.
So then, we need to address the 24-hour shift situation.
Good luck with that.
And honestly, when we went to the 24 hours with the ambulance, we didn't do enough research, and we didn't have enough forethought in, in front of it, 'cause we probably should have adjusted their wages down, um, because you are paying them for sleep time in which you could adjust. I just, we just didn't do...
Well, we also don't have a full-time position for someone who's there, working hours, taking those eight hours a day, where we wouldn't need two people there. I mean, if you're, if you have a full-time director who's there Monday through Friday to serve those eight hours a day, then you don't need partners on a shift for that particular time period.
What are you gonna do with the other?
That'll limit, what I'm saying is...
16 hours. We gotta do the other 16 hours of the shift.
Well, obviously, you, you have to have a rotating shift to cover, to have 24-hour coverage. What I'm saying is...
So add another employee and add $27,000 a year in insurance costs.
No, you're already paying the department head $20 some dollars an hour, and they're, and they're only taking one 24-hour shift instead of...
You have to cover seven 24-hour shifts there somehow.
You're paying the department a 24-hour shift, which is sleep time, at $20 an hour, instead of having that department head there Monday through Friday, nine to five, or eight to four. That's what I'm saying.
You have to cover the other, the other hours of the day somehow.
Right, but when the department head would be there during the day, you wouldn't need that second partner, you'd only need him to have one additional person there, because he would be there, or she would be there, to be able to go on a call.
For eight hours, then who's gonna cover the other 16 hours? We used to do that when we had volunteers, we had volunteers work the bottom 12 hours of the shift, we don't have any volunteers anymore.
I'm not saying you don't schedule shifts, I'm saying during the daylight, eight-hour shift, that overtime that we're paying someone, that eight hours, their shift doesn't have to start until that, they come in, and that one person works that extra eight hours during the day, when you have someone in the office, because you're paying a department head to be there. Instead of paying a department head one 24-hour shift, you make the department head full-time, and you, I mean, you're talking a little bit of an increase in cost, but you'd make up for that in the overtime you're not paying, to have that other person there eight hours a day, every day during the day, when you don't have a director there. That director takes on that secondary, or primary role, actually, in that shift for that eight hours, every day, five days a week. We're paying 24... I mean, I don't have the solution, I'm just saying that needs to be...
When you start calculating in full-time employees on the benefit package, you're wrong in your assessment of how much money you're gonna save. I'm gonna tell you, when you add a full-time employee, and you pay $20,000 a year in insurance costs, you're not saving anything.
I don't know what the insurance package is, of who holds the position now, but what I'm saying is, you're paying for a 24-hour shift, instead of having that person be there Monday through Friday. And while that person is there, you would only need to have one other person there for that eight hours.
And while that person is there for that 24-hour shift, someone else is not there. When he's there for a 24-hour shift, he's covering the shift.
Okay, you're talking about someone putting in 40 hours versus 24. That's the difference. In a week.
No, I listened.
I wanna listen and see what was said at the LCCA discussion, that was on September 4th.
You can listen to your, uh, we're gonna hear them till Monday 8 o'clock.
So you don't wanna know what the instructions were to the senior staff?
There was no instructions given to anyone. He stated his opinion, that was it.
Then why did you go to another meeting and say something different than what the commission said here?
The commission did not say it, Mr. Wallace said it. And I did not tell them, I did not tell them not to pay them. I said, "You need to do an accounting to see how much they have come."
Why are you speaking at the LCCA meeting on behalf of the commission? Why?
Because I'm the representative of the LCCA.
No, we didn't give you any instruction on what to tell the LCCA...
I have been for years.
That doesn't matter, we didn't give you permission to say that from the commission. What was said here at the commission table was not objected to, and then you went and said your own opinion at the LCCA meeting.
You state your opinion all day long in here.
And you're, and you're here, and you're here to object it.
And you state your opinion all over the damn county.
You're here to object it.
So you can state your opinion to all these meetings and stuff out here, and I can't? Is that what you're saying?
No, what you did was influence the decision of a separate board, that acts independently.
No, I didn't. The treasurer wasn't there, and neither was the director.
What does that have...
They didn't have access to the records to determine the proper amount to pay them.
We have had those rec...
They're waiting, they're waiting two weeks, big deal.
You should have those records, Terry, you have those records. The point is that you said something that undermined what was said at the commission.
I have them at home, I don't keep them with me. I don't carry those around with me.
But you're acting like that information has never been, you're acting as if that information has never been given, and it has been given in writing to us.
Well, I didn't have it in front of me, neither did they. They didn't have it sitting there in front of them.
But if they were willing to make that decision, you're the one that influenced it by impeding the process, and I'd like to know why.
Because the treasurer, the director, there were, there were only five members of the board there, if I remember.
So, you're, you're very upset about this organization that receives a handful of thousands of dollars every year, four to, you know, four to $6,000 in the past, you're very upset about that, but we've never once asked for or demanded any documentation from all of these third-party issuings that we give. Are you gonna ask them the same questions, and show up to their meetings, and tell them that they haven't...
They get this audit every year.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do.
No, they don't. No, they don't.
Central Kansas Mental Health, all of those organizations, we get a copy of their office.
And when I asked them this past year for the breakdown, they didn't even have that information to know how many they had served in our own county, but we're paying them. But you won't give our own constituents the freedom to spend that money, you want them to be audited for $3,000, but you'll hand out 15 to 20 to another organization that we don't get records on.
They sat here for months saying that they didn't get any money. I went and did a Freedom of Information Act, I showed them what they got for money. Do I remember today how much of that was extra, and how much of it was budget? No, I do not, and neither did anyone else sitting at that table the other day. So I merely told them, they need to check the figures and write the check for the proper amount.
Check it out.
Yeah, it's here.
You don't have, you have to have, uh, food, uh, whoops.
Hey, are you ready to take control?
I don't know. It doesn't look like fun, does it? Are you guys cutting corn up there? Chopping feed or whatever?
Yeah, trying to cut the feed, uh, the...
Cutting beans yet?
No, we haven't, we haven't cut. Some, some are, will be, but...
Yeah, this weather, this cool down, really weather here is gonna slow it down, isn't it?
Long rainforests here, I close the spray eyes, warm up the trees, and they show about a week of being, uh, possibly raining, so that's gonna...
That's gonna slow it down.
In the week, we, we're gonna get to the middle of October, we'll have a, you know, if you get a rain or something.
I think it's dark and cool, and it won't ever dry out, will it?
Yeah, it's gonna...
I know.
It's gonna change.
Yeah.
How are you, Jane?
Oh, I'm pretty good.
Will I help you?
I get stuck.
Huh?
I get stuck. Whoops, oh, I don't want you to wreck your back.
Oh, I wrecked your back, I just didn't want, I just didn't wanna let go, and you fall down and see, you get the...
You sound like your sons. Very helpful, very helpful.
Did I get that, pull that dirt on that floor this time? Yeah, I guess I can sweep it.
Did you find anything?
Well, it's not very good communication. Didn't have... You can have discussions.
I look at it this way, we paid our taxes in, give them the money and let them walk. Isn't that what we're being taxed for is for senior programs?
But deal with that, you're two or three tier levels and...
As far as I'm concerned, it should go directly to the senior center rather than to council and agent. Because we're paying for stuff that doesn't do any good for the senior person.
Well, you should probably say it does because we don't know who's had a private, private meetings with... You know, it was, it was interesting. Just as though you get your Medicare 2019 book. I had, I had fun with that, I took, I gave it to them, I said, "Hey, read, study up there and figure out what you need to do." Well, I'm going to do that, this is, this is, well, there's a lot, a lot of words there. I said, "That's what, that's what Teresa Post says, she's helping, helping the seniors down there do with it." They can give you a follow-up on that, I said. It's so complicated.
You're going to buy and feed enough art during the month. Keep taking the Medicare from the building and...
Well, actually, can't help but then explain those books and...
Thought about this is when she was supposed to be the business. With this coming up.
She might return to that, I don't know. She's got another job now. I understand.
With the aging?
I don't know where she's been. Somebody said she's, she's done another job now.
Has she started an resignation here?
I don't, she feels that she's going to be put down on a part-time basis. She'll probably stay now.
That's just a thought, so, that's just a thought.
That's, that's where the picture looks.
Hello?
I heard by the time. And leave twice a week. You're talking about that just used to the post office.
Well, you're going to have to, uh... Consolidate. There's a lot of areas, we need, there need to be consolidation.
Yeah.
It's like in the schools, they can't, they can't keep...
Funding them.
I almost, I almost had a way of, these communication systems, right?
It's, that's my team.
Before counties have the same...
Exactly. No.
Radio systems.
This was a month ago.
Why each have to have a separate one now? Here they deal with his van, having, we got to bring up the government standards and pay.
And he's talking about that. Well, you know what? That was approved by the conservation district here, local. And they've got the whole act on them to find out why they put that down in there.
I'm confused.
Conservation industry gave them money to help build it.
So I was saying, right, they'd be responsible. I know, I know.
They did a share on that deal.
It's a Michael Crouser.
I have a problem.
Here is speaking now.
This is 2018. And I guess the 2017 running one is in council nature. And that's where it should come. So I, I can't support that motion. I also, as I read this...
What's wrong with the now? Can't drive over?
Let me get back in here what he just said.
I am concerned, but... I'll second it.
What was that motion?
I have a problem. We don't have the 2017. This is 2018. And I guess the 2017 running one is in council nature. And that's where it should come. So I, I can't support that motion.
Can't support that much.
I also, as I read this... Audit report. I am concerned that that money doesn't seem to always be used for things that, we need to have a set policy what's being used for. And I have, as I look at the books of all, everybody, I question whether, as Terry said, that there isn't a standard policy for what that money is being used for. I have no problem in paying or insuring your utilities. I do begin to have problems when we start paying programs or other kinds of things. I, I want justification for those. The rent and that, that kind of stuff, I have a problem.
We haven't paid programs.
Reserve place.
I know, I know.
Certainly, we have got to have those receipts. Got to know how that money is spent. And I guess if I criticize the council and agent more, I would say that is one of the areas that they fell down in and not existed. They seem to be more insistent on who was there and how many.
Yes.
I am more concerned about how that money is spent than I am who is there.
But I have a question. Why is it that you're saying that you're concerned about it being spent for programs and you're not concerned about it paying for the insurance? When the bill levy that the public passed specifically says programs, if anything, we should be concerned that we're funding the actual structures and not funding the programs? Because when the bill levy...
If you don't have the structure, you can't have the programs. And these structures are, I think, are more critically important. I think those programs, a lot of those programs are greedy, they don't cost a lot. If you don't have a good building, people to be there and stuff, the senior centers can't operate.
But I'm, I'm just confused as to why we have this position when the total distribution to the Silver Senior Center in a given year for the past several years has been around $3,000? If you're talking about not having a problem funding their operation as far as their building, that barely pays the insurance and the utilities. Anything above and beyond that wasn't even available for them to spend.
I cannot deal with past history. I'm dealing with what is presently in our, you know, when I presently want that money.
But we are dealing in past history because we already distributed the money to the council and agent who did not then in turn distribute it to the groups and the buildings that are facilitating these programs. And if you read the resolution that the past, three of them, two of the three, we can't find the first one, right, Dawn? We don't have the first one, but we have the other two, and they specifically say, "Programs for the elderly." And that actually does not say that we are able to utilize that money to pay someone's salary, to pay health insurance benefits, to pay rent, to pay electricity. It doesn't say that, it says to pay for programs. So those programs for the elderly have yet to truly be facilitated other than from within the senior centers.
I was like, that's referring to actual programs.
That's the exact word.
It's an exact program.
That's your money, I, I don't have any problems, right? All I have a problem with is the money that is distributed, I want it in a separate account, I want to know exactly where, when, I want backup receipts for it. The rest of it, I, I don't care.
But again, I'm confused. But I'm confused because the, the representatives that we have in front of us are representing an organization that only received enough money to pay their operational overhead, which would be utilities and insurance and structural things that they received, they did get some tables and chairs, et cetera. The other entities that have received this money from us have an ex, an excess of funds that they've been able to utilize over and above their overhead expenses. So if anyone needs this critiquing, it's not the actual group that is before us today.
My comment would be, if at the end of the year, any one of the three organizations had excess funds over and above what they spent, would their next budget be cut? Because that would be adequate, and we already did that. The other thing too is like, when we consider activity for programs, exercise class, the clothing, when they come together, the coloring.
I'm going to interrupt you, I'm going to interrupt you, I call for question.
I don't, no.
I'm going to call for the question. We were on the discussion of a vote that I had proposed a motion, I'm going to interrupt you. I, I call for a question.
And they didn't have any question? They were just calling for the vote.
I would move that we, I would move we at this time distribute funding to the Silver Senior Center in the amount of $6,000 and Lincoln Senior Center in the amount of $8,000.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, I'm wondering why you chose those amounts?
Because that's 50% of what they're asking for until we have the decision on exactly what we're willing to fund and what we're not willing to fund. I think that's, that gets them funding.
We already approved these budgets.
Maybe for later.
And now...
But I think we need to decide exactly what we're willing to pay them or what we're not willing to pay.
Last summer.
Yeah.
I know. I know.
They don't know what is your nation, that money.
That's my question, who's going to create this list of acceptable? I know, one job.
Yeah.
I know.
Yep. Wow, it is so confusing.